Then I'm going to call this special city council meeting to order. Would the city secretary please call the roll?
Mitchell?
Here.
Coach?
Here.
Ellison? Flores, Kale?
Here.
Rizzo? Bradshaw?
Present.
Tobias?
Here.
All right, we have five members present. We have a quorum. Next up, executive session. Councilmember Bradshaw.
Mayor Citizen comments?
Sorry, next up, citizen comments. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak on any item? Seeing none, I'm going to close citizen comments. Next up, executive session. Councilmember Bradshaw.
Pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, the city council reserves the right to convene into executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting. The city council may convene into executive session pursuant to any lawful exception contained in Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including any or all of the following topics. One, pending or contemplated litigation or to seek the advice of the city attorney pursuant to Section 551 dot zero seven one, cause number two zero dash two zero four eight, save our springs alliance incorporated at all for the city of Kyle, city council members in their official capacities in the 453rd Judicial District, Hayes County, Texas. Alexander condemnation marketplace development agreement, development and annexation agreement for the Texas La High properties. Two, possible purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate pursuant to Section 551 dot zero two, zero seven two. Personnel matters pursuant to Section 551 dot zero seven four. And four, convene into executive session pursuant to Section 551 dot zero eight seven, Texas Government Code to deliberate regarding...
You don't have to read two, three, or four.
Okay.
Only the ones with bullets underneath, so you're good already.
Okay, that's all.
So, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Six to zero. Councilor Ellison, you there? There was no action taken during executive session. There will be no action taken now. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by councilmember Tobias. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Six to zero. All right, we're going to go ahead and get started. Okay. All right. Good evening, everyone. The time is 7:04 PM. It is Tuesday, December 15th, and I'm going to call this regular city council meeting to order. Would all please rise for pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the city secretary please call the roll?
Mitchell?
Here.
Coach?
Here.
Ellison? Flores, Kale?
Here.
Rizzo?
Present.
Bradshaw?
Present.
Tobias?
Present.
I believe councilmember Ellison is working to get logged in. He is present, though, for the record. Next up, approval of the minutes.
Mayor motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tim Coach, seconded by councilmember Bradshaw that we approve the minutes for December 1st, 2020. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Six to zero. All right, next up, citizen comments period. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience or who is registered to speak online to speak now, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, that you direct those comments to the mayor and council, and that you fill out a citizen comments form and submit it to either myself or the city secretary. Do we have anyone registered to speak online? I don't have any sheets in front of me. Jennifer?
I don't have any.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close citizen comments. It is now closed. If there are no objections, I'm going to push the city manager's report to a little later in the evening just because we have a lot of business to get to. We can do the same with the appointments if you'd like, or we can go ahead and bring those up. Does anyone have an opinion on that? All right, we're going to go ahead and bring them up then. Next up, agenda item numbers four, five, six, and seven. Consider nominations for the selection of Mayor Pro Tim. Consider appointment to the Alliance Regional Water Authority Board of Directors to replace Tracy Sheal. Appointment, a member of city council to Campo, and consider appointment to CapCOG General Assembly to replace Tracy Sheal. Do we have councilperson Ellison on yet?
It shows he's on, he's muted.
Yes, I'm on.
Okay. All right, so we'll bring them up together. We discussed this at the last meeting. It was decided to, that we would wait until this meeting to have the full council formally and finally seated. Currently, the Mayor Pro Tim is Mr. Coach. The Arwa Board seat has been vacated, was formerly held by Councilor Sheal. The Campo seat is held by the mayor with councilperson Ellison serving as a proxy. The CapCOG General Assembly is, was held by councilmember Sheal and is currently also held by councilmember Rizzo, I believe. Is that correct? So, I'm open to discussion. If anybody has anything to say or wants to go first.
Mayor, I'd like us to look at item number four.
Okay.
Consider nomination, selection of Mayor Pro Tim. I'd like to nominate our current Mayor Pro Tim to continue that role.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tim, is this acceptable to you nomination-wise?
It has been an honor to serve as your Mayor Pro Tim over the past year. I would be honored to continue to serve as your Mayor Pro Tim.
Okay. Any further discussion on that one?
Yes, Mayor.
Councilperson Ellison, go ahead.
I'd like to make a nomination for Mayor Pro Tim for councilmember Robert Rizzo.
Mr. Rizzo?
I want to thank councilmember Ellison for thinking of me. I think it would be an honor to serve as Mayor Pro Tim. Unfortunately, at this time, our family has some issues that we're dealing with health-wise, and it might take some of my time of the time I'm already giving to the council. I'd hate to commit myself any further, but I truly appreciate councilmember Ellison thinking of me, and it's an honor to be considered for that position. But this time, I'll have to decline. Thank you.
Any further discussion on that item? All right, well, then I'll make a motion to appoint Mayor Pro Tim Coach to continue serving for another year in that current role.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by councilmember Tobias, that we appoint Coach to be Mayor Pro Tim for the next year. Is there any further discussion on that item? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Seven to zero. Next up is the Arwa Board seat. That is, once a month on Wednesdays at three? The fourth Wednesday at three o'clock. And it rotates between Public Works Building and Kyle, the San Marcos and Buta. So, it's, you got to travel. Sometimes it's here, sometimes it's San Marcos. Virtual, you're right. So, and the meetings last for an hour to two hours. Not too long. It's mostly professionals in there. Does anybody have a desire to serve on that board? The other option is that we can appoint someone else. We don't have to appoint one of us. We have two staff members that are currently on the board. I don't see where Mr. Sellers is, but I know we have some staff members on the, on the call. James might be a good person to reach out and ask for his opinion if, in the event that we don't have anyone that we feel comfortable sending from council. James, do you have thoughts on that? James is on vacation, isn't he? He is on vacation. James is on vacation, so we'll need Scott. Good news is, we can wait on this one, but it'll just be unfilled, which is less than desirable.
I'd like to wait to see. I know everything's virtual. The hours are just kind of hard for me.
Yeah, they're very tough.
That four to five o'clock is always really bad for me during the day, so...
That's the challenge of a professional board is they like to meet when they're on the clock. Doesn't work out as well for elected officials. Who's, who are our two staff members that are on the board? James is one of them. Sanford? Is Tim on the line?
Hi, Mayor, Council. This is Tim Sanford. I am, I am here.
Tim, you're currently on the Arwa Board. Do you have some thoughts? Have you been hearing what we've been discussing? We're having trouble finding someone who can commit the time to make it to those meetings. We're considering adding a third staff member. Do you have thoughts on that?
So, yes, sir, I do serve on the board as well as the technical committee. We meet once a meet, once a month, I'm sorry, for each of those, the board, and once a month for the technical committee. I do believe we have some staff within Public Works that would, that could suit that role very well. I would like to discuss that with our Public Works Director before nominating anybody, but I believe that we could definitely fill that position, no problem.
Okay. Is staff comfortable? I mean, is council comfortable with Tim bringing back a recommendation? Tim and Harper bringing back a recommendation to next week?
Yes, sir.
Or next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Sound good, Tim?
Yes, sir, well, do.
All right, thank you. Next up's the Campo seat. They meet somewhat sporadically. The meetings can be as long as a council meeting from time to time because it is, it is a, an elected body of regional leaders getting together, and so there's a little bit more political discussions that take place there. And obviously, they deal in very large allocations, of which Kyle receives a portion. Is there anyone who has an affinity for the Campo seat or an interest in it?
What time are the, the hours of the meetings and where are they usually held?
Well, it's all virtual now as well. They, they have, historically, they've been at UT, at the, I can't remember the name of the building, but right there on the campus, and they're normally at five or 5:30, something like that. So, if you work till five in Austin, you can make them. You can make that meeting, so. My thought was to, I'm, I currently serve, but again, like I said at the last meeting, there's, it's, we're really serving more as, in a ceremonial role because we don't have the ability to vote just yet, but that when the 2020 census comes through, we expect to be ratified or actually brought into the Campo Board as a voting member, which will be a great honor for our city and a, and a big responsibility. So, one of the reasons that I brought councilperson Ellison forward as a proxy at the, at the, the last time that we put this to a vote was just to have someone else who's educated because they have 800-page agendas as well, and it's a pretty big commitment. So, my thought was if councilperson Ellison was open to it, and from a scheduling standpoint, if it would work for him to swap out, maybe I serve as his proxy, but that he could actually be the designee on the Campo Board would be a recommendation I would make. I'd have no idea, councilperson Ellison, if you're interested in that. I'm also fine to continue serving. We need to definitely have someone designated that way.
I would like to nominate somebody.
Okay, just one second. Councilperson Ellison, do you have a response to that? I'm not sure where you stand on this. You're muted.
Councilmember Flores Kale had a comment.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't realize you were muted.
No, that's okay.
So, we didn't hear you.
Go ahead.
Okay, I just, if time allotted and if Mr. Rizzo was willing to, I would like to nominate him for this position.
So, meetings usually start about 5:30 and go on long, pretty long? I definitely would, would love to serve on Campo. Unfortunately, due to the issue that we have going on in the family right now with health issues, at this time, I'd have to decline, but I really appreciate councilmember Kale nominating, really nominating me. I think of it as an honor as well. Unfortunately, things just didn't line up the way we were hoping on, and I appreciate the nomination. Thank you very much.
Councilperson Ellison, do you have any interest in it?
No, thank you. I want to focus on improving my leadership here in Kyle and as a member of this council.
Okay. Anyone else want to throw their name in the hat on the ring, in the ring for Campo? Or we want to just leave it as is?
I think we should just leave it as is. It's, it's been working, so.
Okay, thank you.
We'll just keep it as is for now.
Okay, and then finally is the General Assembly. It's the lowest on the list in terms of time commitment, but it's a great way to network with other leaders. Councilperson Rizzo, you can probably speak to what those luncheons are like in the General Assembly meetings.
Yeah, there are definitely a lot of different elected officials throughout the area, and we do talk about air quality, which is very important, and the monitoring systems. It's not a huge time commitment, and it is virtual right now. And even when we weren't virtual, it wasn't a big time commitment, but it was still very educational. So, at this time, I'd like to nominate councilmember Kale, if she would like to be appointed, to consider the appointment for CapCOG.
I would be honored.
Okay. Does anybody else want to throw their name in the, in the ring?
Is there only one seat open for that?
Currently, yes.
Who's the other representative?
Okay.
And actually, I'm the voting member for council, so this would be like my proxy or my backup.
You want to put in a motion?
I thought I did, okay. I'd like to make a motion to nominate councilmember Kale to CapCOG.
Second. Second.
All right, it's been moved by councilperson Rizzo, seconded by councilmember Bradshaw that we nominate councilperson Flores Kale to fill the expiring, to fill the seat vacated by Tracy Sheal. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion carries. Seven to zero. All right, here we go. Next up, CIP Road Projects and Consent Agenda Presentation. I know Leon's got several items to start. Mr. Sellers, would you mind starting with just a general update on the Bunton Roundabout? I know we had a pretty, pretty thorough briefing today from the chief, but I think it'd be good for us to get, get that information. I know there's some folks watching, waiting.
Mayor, Council, Scott Sellers, for the record. I do have Chief Barnett queued up in case you have questions about our police presence on, on BB and Dacey. Lot has gone on with, with the roundabout traffic circle on Bunton Road and Goforth. This is a, a project that occurred because of the development from Casita Ranch, but also the city did request it. As we looked at that kind of askew intersection there, it made the most sense to have a roundabout. So, this was something that, yes, occurred because of the development, but the city was also requesting a better traffic flow, especially in light of the additional traffic volume that we will be experiencing in that, that area. We worked with the, the contractor quite a bit upfront to identify the best way to detour vehicles or traffic through that intersection. At first, there was only a, a one-way, which would be west to north from Bunton to Goforth. Ultimately, we worked with the contractor to add a two-way cut through, through there. That would be on the north side of the roundabout. On the south side, it's been questioned why we did not have a cut through on the south side of the roundabout, which would allow east-west traffic on Bunton. Couple of reasons for that. The first is the, the roundabout itself needed to be constructed in that area, so we, we didn't have enough room to allow vehicles through there. The other reason is there were construction entrances for the Casita Ranch development, and as we looked at the, the heavy traffic that was coming in and out of the subdivision, it was not a safe situation for, for your smaller vehicles and the conflicts with very large rock-carrying and, and construction vehicles. But we did talk to the contractor about finishing the south side of the roundabout as quickly as possible, so then we could have dedicated east-west traffic on Bunton, at which time they would shift the construction of that roundabout to the north side. We expect that to happen by the end of the month, at which time then that north leg on Goforth will be closed. All right, so you will not have that north-to-west cut through that we have now, so then it would just be east-to-west on Bunton. But we'd feel like that will allow the, the highest volume of cars through east-to-west as well. The, the roundabout traffic was, was a project of several projects that kind of materialized in that area. The county has a project there on, I believe, High Road or Cotton Gin, it's on Cotton Gin. And then the city has its Windy Hill Bridge project. So, several projects, transportation projects in the area were pushing traffic onto BB Road and, and really adding more, more volume of cars to the, the BB-Dacey intersection. We were able to identify and acquire, lease a portable traffic signal, construction signal. We were able to go out and monitor the, the timing of that multiple times. We've had staff out there every day monitoring the traffic. We've adjusted the timing on the signals several times to make sure we allowed for the highest volume of east-west traffic on BB. And then we also added the additional police presence to the intersection. We, we want to thank Hayes County for, for offering some assistance there. We, we still have some, some coverage holes that I think we, we would like to ask them to help fill, but internally, we've used predominantly on-duty officers to go out there during the high volume or peak traffic times of the day, morning and, and evening rush hour. And they've been able to keep that traffic moving as best as possible through, through that area. In fact, they've said at, at times, those signals have done so well that they've just stood back and let the signals take the, the traffic through there. On average, they're saying that it takes one to two light cycles for the vehicles to, to get into the queue and then to clear the queue, which is much better than earlier on when we had, you know, 20-plus minutes of, of queuing and waiting to get through. Our goal is to, to keep the additional police presence, the traffic control, through this Friday evening. We, we chose Friday evening because that's when school will officially get out. And then through the break, we're hoping, we will keep watching it, but we're hoping that the traffic volume slows down and is managed by the signals. And that also gives us time to get, again, through the end of the month where the traffic pattern will change at the roundabout itself. So, with that, we, we've been listening. We've been attempting to, to add as much as we can through there. I think we've done a pretty good job, all things considered, and by the first of January, we should see a new traffic pattern because of the roundabout construction. And with that, again, Chief Barnett is, is ready to answer questions. So is Leon, and I'm happy to answer any as well.
Does anybody have any questions on, particularly on that issue before we go to the consent agenda?
This is Councilman Tobias for the record. And first of all, of course, this is, the most, majority of all this is happening in my district. And I, first of all, want to thank all the residents and citizens in that area, especially the neighborhood of Kensington Trails, other neighborhoods off of Goforth, Green Pastures. When I started getting all these phone calls last month and actually experiencing them myself, I understand y'all's frustration about this and the inconvenience that it was applying to each and every single one of you. Just know that we were doing our best to resolve this issue, and thank you to the city staff manager and the chief police for actually listening and seeing the major issues we were having. There was an accident that happened there about last month, and I actually wrote up on it about, literally about two minutes after it happened. It was pretty bad. And so, I, as much as I'm very glad to see the improvements, I really hope we can still stay on this contractor to get this done in time. And we must always remember, when it comes to our residents and the citizens and their families, their safety and security and protection should always be priority. It should always be number one. There should be never a price tag on it anyway, as well. We got to make sure we provide as much coverage as possible, as much security, and we need to make sure that in the future, and I'm going to say this to the residents out there, there's going to be more projects coming in the next couple of years. So, as our city continues to grow, we need to start preparing for that as well. And I think this next time around, we as a city will learn from this and try to make the adjustments as much as possible. But I just, again, wanted to thank all the residents that reached out to me via texts, emails, all the phone calls, all the great people, again, in the Kensington Trails neighborhood, all the people out there in Goforth. We are getting through this. It will end soon. I just ask for your patience, and, and of course, drive safely in those areas, especially at night. Thank you.
Scott, I just want to thank you and staff for being there when we started calling in and asking questions about the relief for the roadways on the east side. I, I want to thank the county commissioner for coming out and allowing us to use the traffic light system. I know that, that's helped us out, correct? Is the light system from the county?
I believe we found that from a retailer or vendor.
In Dripping Springs.
So, we ended up renting them afterwards. I thought the county had given them to us. So, we ended up renting those out. Okay, so thank you for finding those because they've helped a lot. But just, just to remind everyone that we are working on a lot of CIP projects, and there's more CIP projects coming to that area, but we'll try to do our best to plan and try to mitigate some of that traffic congestion. I know we're adding a little bit to 150 as well. One of the things we can do is the city also is working with the developers, the contractors that are working... that are working on the roadways to finish these projects in a timely manner, and I can promise you that I'll be overseeing that and doing my best to make sure that these projects move forward, and they're not a big inconvenience. I know what the inconvenience can be. I've lived through a CIP project, so, you know, just in front of my house, and I know what it does, how it changes your life. So we'll continue to work as a city together with the entities, county, any other resources we have, and to mitigate some of that traffic congestion. But thank you for all your hard work, Scott. Appreciate it.
Anyone else? Scott, I actually have some feedback as well. This project and the Wendy Hill Bridge project both kind of had a similar impact on the city council in terms of when we were informed of road closures and major detours and the window of time we had in which to try to figure out something to do. And I understand that there's a sort of a sequence between when projects get approved from the council and then engineering, working with contractors to create traffic plans, and those traffic plans don't come to the council. But there's a dissonance between what we think is about to happen as a council and what we are projecting to the community is about to happen and what actually happens when these projects get detoured and rerouted in a way that nobody is expecting. The council doesn't have the ability to advocate for the plan because it's not the plan that we were told, and it's certainly not something that we're excited about defending. So my council, and I would say expectation is, as we're getting ready for these next CIP projects, that the impact on the residents and that the traffic patterns needs to be thought about long before when you're getting the actual, like, all right, we're going to start building this thing next week, so let's figure this out. And then we get it at the council meeting before construction starts to let us know what the decision was. We're behind. We're not on your team at that point. We have to get on your team by asking every question, and then after the patterns have been established and maybe aren't favorable, you're getting it. I know, I know you got it for everyone on this dice. The residents don't necessarily understand how much you are being pressured by this council to try to make the situation better, but we know, you know, and it will help you in the future. It will help you, Leon, it will help the contractors and everyone to consider how this traffic situation is going to be perceived and also to just give us more notice so that we actually have an opportunity to let you know if we're good with it or not, because we haven't gotten a choice on any of this stuff. But with all that said, thank you for trying to figure out ways to make it better. I know you certainly have, and I know the residents appreciate that. Anything else? All right, thank you. Go ahead. Leon, we're ready for you now.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, Council. Leon, Barbara, City Engineer. Lehman Road and Burleson are about the same. When we discussed at this last council meeting, we're still trying to close out the Lehman Road project. Burleson, we're still working with the contractor. Quite frankly, Council, I don't think he's going to finish that Burleson Street punch list this month. It's probably going to be next month by the time they finish the punch list because it was a pretty significant list. But we'll keep staying on top of the contractor and asking him to, or even finish the project and close it out. The Wendy Hill Street and Drainage Project began on November 30th. This picture was taken a few hours ago. They were pouring concrete around 4:30, 4 o'clock, so they're moving pretty quickly on this. They're pouring the culvert, as you can tell there. That's the Dollar General in the background, and they hope to start Phase 2 in the beginning of January 4th. We're definitely trying to shoot for the December 22nd to getting this road back open again. So we're also using what's called high early strength concrete. That means that you can get to a higher strength quicker, obviously, and so we're using that high early concrete to get it, within seven days, it usually meets the strength that you want. So we're reusing that particular material to expedite the project. South side, we're 71% complete. We're still working on Post Road lift station. This is really looking like a lift station now. You can tell where the locations of the manholes are, where the pump station is, where the generator's located and the driveway and all the pavement that's leading to that driveway. It's starting to look like a lift station now, so we're getting close to wrapping that one up pretty soon. We are still working there, TDCJ, and hopefully we'll be working our way up by the Alexander property there towards County Road 158. The third crew, they finished their third board. They're working on the very last long board that goes under I-35, and so we'll help to complete that over, I would say, several weeks. Of course, with the holidays, there'll probably be some time next month before we wrap that one up. Expansion plant, I do want to mention, Senate item number 13. That authorizes Burgess and Iple to move forward with designing the dewatering facilities that we would like to get there at that facility. That will be a permanent dewatering facility. Right now, we're leasing or renting the equipment that we have there. We're 27% complete, and they continue working on the other items that they need to finish to out the project, such as pipe, formwork rebar, and electrical duct backs and manholes. We're still on track to meet our goal of early spring of '22 to complete the project. And there was a question raised concerning the additional work for that dewatering facility. We expect that we will, that shouldn't delay our project. We can always, we'll always have that leased there in case we need to move it around, so it should not impact our schedule. Just wanted to show you how fast they're moving. This is, what, matter 15 days, 16 days? And you can see how far they've gotten on these clarifiers. It's interesting, these pictures, looks like one clarifier is larger than the other, and it's really not. They're both the same size, but you can tell how fast our contractor's moving on this project. The Bunton Creek Interceptor, Phase 2, they've started installing erosion controls. This picture shows, this may not be as clear to you, but the fencing that's on the right is actually Bunton Creek Reserve, Phase 3. They are planning to tie this line that's going in. Obviously, they're not going to be able to do that till we complete the line and have it tested, inspected in the past, but that string of silt fence you see going up towards the middle, towards the upside, that's the line that's going to be going in starting as soon as possible. Well, site number four, the contractor actually wanted to start back in November, but because of the water usage we were seeing because of the drought, we had to postpone it. So I guess initially, we were going to try to start this on December 15th, but the contractor has asked to go ahead and start January 1st. We'll actually start taking the water out of the tank shortly thereafter, so probably about the 4th or the 5th, you'll see some activity, pretty heavy activity around that water tower.
Leon, sorry to interrupt. That rehab, does that, the paint, the logo, is that something that's been?
Yes, that will include the logo, yes.
City of Kyle's logo?
Yes, sir. On Elko Post Road, we're meeting with the county tomorrow to continue going over the details for building the project. We need, for example, on text stop permitting, we need the county to tell us which traffic control plan they prefer, so that's why I'm molding up on the text stop permitting to get that wrapped up. And we're still working on the right-of-way that we need to straighten out that intersection at County Road 158 and Elko Post Road, and still waiting on the legal department at Hayes County to return the draft interlocal agreement so we can move forward with that one. I'm hoping to see that happen sometime in January. And the Casita Ranch, I won't go into the details, but I think this is a picture that was just taken, so you can see where they are, curb gutters in, bases in. They're moving pretty quickly on it. The one issue that I did bring up to the, as we mentioned before, Hayes County is using this as part of their detour, so I just sent an email to the Hayes County engineer, Jerry Borsheding, advising him that this is going to be, that north section is going to be closing, so they may have to revise their traffic control plan. So I've given them some heads-up that they need to start looking at maybe modifying their traffic control plan if that north connection is closed. Opal Lane will be closed probably next week. I don't think it'll start this week. I think, but last I heard and talked to the developer, they will be closing Opal Lane next week so they can do their improvements there on Opal Lane near the railroad tracks. I wanted to talk a little bit about item number 12 on the consent agenda. We currently have one of these smart covers in place, and it's in hometown Kyle. Typically, when you want to monitor your flows through a sewer system, you have to go in the manhole and install this equipment in there. This particular smart cover, it's installed from the cover. You don't have to get inside the manhole, but it gives you a lot of good, accurate data. It helps, it's going to help us monitor the INI or the infiltration inflow as we have these rain events. It's real interesting that when we installed this, about five weeks ago, I believe, it just, after that, it kind of stopped raining, so we haven't really had a chance to see the impact of INI yet in that particular manhole that's there that we selected. Plan is to get two more of these smart covers and place them upstream, and what that's going to do is identify what kind of INI we have from Cypress Forest and what kind of INI we have from Six Creeks. And that's going to help us decide whether we need to start doing pump and haul, because one of the key things we have to do is we have to build Elliott Branch because Six Creeks and Cypress Forest, portions of those subdivisions will be flowing into the Elliott Branch line. So we're just wanting to make sure we monitor these manholes, make sure we don't have any overflows. But these are really state-of-the-art. Want to understand, City of San Antonio, or actually SAW's San Antonio Water System has over 500 of these smart covers throughout their city. So several other cities up and down I-35 have acquired some of these units, and they're very safe pieces of equipment to have to be able to monitor your flows in and out of your sewer systems. And next item?
Leon, can I ask a question real quick on that? On the ANI?
Sure.
So you're talking about these smart covers. If we had the infrastructure in place, would be able to get these, not have to go out there and read them manually? Would they be able to be transmitted to a central location?
Yes. Yes, this is all sent to us through our computer. That graph you see is a real shot of one of the, you can see the peaks in the regular flow, the morning peak and the afternoon peak. You can see that very clearly on this. So we're getting data live on our computers. We don't have to go out there and check anything.
That's great. That's awesome. Thank you, Leon.
Can I follow up? What is the peak? The peaks not rain, though, is it? Because it doesn't look like.
No, that's your morning and your evening. You're going to have a morning peak and an evening peak, maybe one around noon, on your flows through the sewer system. Now, what we think we might see and hope we don't see is?
Noted. There it is on the paper. Wow.
Yes, if it is.
Yeah, you get stuck in traffic, and by the time you get to the house, Leon.
And there's our website.
Mayor?
Councilor Ellison.
Mr. Berger, could we go back to the Wendy Hill slide? Could you, for the record, your last bullet point there on Phase 2, the construction, could you give us an idea of where that part will be?
We're actually going to build the road to where people can start using it while we're finishing up the construction. We have other work to do on this project. There's some drainage to the west of this project that we have to do also. So we're going to open up the south half of Wendy Hill so that we can start pushing that traffic onto it. Does that make sense?
I believe so. A map would have been helpful, but I appreciate it. This is more, so, because this is over by my area, and I have a lot of folks that have been asking me about this project as well.
I will have one for you the next meeting.
Thank you.
Actually, we'll probably put it on our website.
Anyone have any other questions for Leon? Comments? Did Harper have a couple of the items on the consent? I thought I saw something in the department head notes that he had a couple items to present. I just don't want to skip him. Does anybody have any questions on any of the items on consent or want to pull any of the items?
I have a question on the first two items.
Those are mostly Harper, I think, but.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to consent items 11 through 18.
Do you want the items pulled, Councilor Ellison, or do you want them, just you want to just ask questions on them?
I can ask the question on both of them. Where would the funds that are retrieved from the auction go?
Mayor Council, this is Harper Wilder, Pope Works Director. Item 10 on the consent agenda, I believe, is that the one that you're referring to?
Yes, I just want to know where the revenues of the auctioning of the vehicles would go to.
Mayor and Council, this is Perves Mohit. For the record, City's Director of Finance. All proceeds from the auction will be deposited in the city's general fund balance for future appropriation by city council.
That's what I want to know. Make a motion to approve, you know, items nine and 10, I believe they are?
Well, we've got the whole consent agenda in front of us, so we can do it all if we'd like.
Oh, yes. I apologize.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve consent items nine through 18. One second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilor Rizzo, seconded by Councilor Tobias, that we approve the consent agenda items number nine through 18. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Seven to zero. All right, next up, we have three items that are, have public hearings. We'll start with agenda item number 19, first reading, considering possible action on to approve an ordinance of the City of Kyle, making a finding of special benefit to the property in Six Creeks Public Improvement District, providing for the method of assessment of special assessments against property in Improvement Area Number 2, et cetera. This item has a public hearing. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing unless there are any objections. Seeing none, the public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who would like to come forward and speak on this item?
You went to public first.
This is just a public hearing. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. It is now closed. We're ready to hear. Mr. Miller?
Good evening, Mayor and Council members, and congratulations on your reelection and all the new members. My name is Gregory Miller, and I'm with Bickerstaff, Heath, Delgado Acosta, and Austin, and we serve as the city's bond counsel, and we have for many years, and we're very proud to do so. And we're here tonight to talk about the three items in front of you. Should I do them one by one or just?
No, you can brief all of them together. We'll vote on them separately, but go ahead.
Okay, great, yeah. So these three actions together concern the development of the Six Creeks PID project, and specifically, we are levying assessments to pay for the bonds that are going to be used to fund certain public improvements in that district. With us tonight is Trip Davenport and Robert Rivera from FMS Bonds. So I think a good way to break this up would be, I can discuss any legal aspects of the project, and Trip can go through the financial aspects of the project. But if you recall, you approved the creation of the PID a few years back. We issued some bonds for Improvement Area Number 1 last year, and the developer has done a lot of development there and is ready to issue a new series of bonds, and that's what we're doing tonight. Any questions, feel free to ask me, but I'll invite Trip up here to go through the finances.
Mayor, Council, good evening. So we went into the market today with two different bonds, one for Improvement Area 1, the other for Improvement Area 2. Improvement Area 1 was $4.4 million, and Improvement Area 2 was $6.4 million. And I want to congratulate the council and the staff and the developer. These were the two best-priced PID financings for a new money transaction that were ever done in the state of Texas, and that speaks to the council, it speaks to the staff, speaks to the city's professionals and the development itself. There have been several hundred of these deals ever done. These two were the best-priced ever done, so I want to commend everyone.
How'd you pull that off?
Well, we'd like to think that we have something to do with it, but at the same time, you have exceptional staff. The council has had a lot of mechanisms put in place to help protect the types of PIDs that you do, and the investment community realizes that. We've had institutional investors come down, Goldman Sachs, visited with your city manager and your finance director and some of your professionals, and all of that, in combination with an exceptional development, really translated into this, this pricing. So congratulations again to you all, to the whole team that put this together.
What made the, what made it so good? Was it the rate or the term?
So, and there are a lot of factors that go into it. It's, part of its market dynamics, we have a historically low interest rate, but at the same time, you all have a very conservative PID policy put in place, and because of that, the investors really know that you take these things seriously, and the way you manage these types of projects. Your city manager, your finance director have been very involved and meticulous through this whole process. Your, your city attorneys have been exceptional. I mean, just, it's a team effort, and at the end of the day, the, the pricing isn't indicative of how this all played out. So y'all, y'all did a great job.
Thank you, Trip. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Davenport or Mr. Miller? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Entertainer motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve consent item number 19.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Rizzo, seconded by Mayor Protem Coach, that we approve agenda item number 19. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Any objection to this one being finally passed? Seeing none, it's finally passed. We'll go through the next two without the briefings. Next up, agenda item number 20, first reading, considering possible action on an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the City of Kyle, Texas Special Assessment Revenue Bond Series 2020, Six Creeks Public Improvement District Area Number One Project, et cetera. This item also has a public hearing, so if there are no objections, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing now. Seeing none, the public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this item? Alright, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Anything to add on these items? Mr. Miller? Trip? Is anything to add? Okay.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve consent, I'm sorry, action, possible action item number 20.
Second.
Alright, it's been moved by Councilor Rizzo, seconded by Mayor Protem Coach, is there, that we approve agenda item number 20? Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries, seven to zero. Is there any objection to this item being finally passed? Seeing none, it is finally passed. And next up, agenda item number 21, first reading, considering possible action on an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the City of Kyle, Texas Special Assessment Revenue Bond Series 2020, Six Creeks Public Improvement District Improvement Area Number Two Project, et cetera. This item has a public hearing. If there are no objections, I'm going to go ahead and open that public hearing. Seeing none, the public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak on this item? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Councilor Rizzo?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve consent item number 21.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilor Rizzo, seconded by Mayor Protem Coach, we approve agenda item number 21. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries, seven to zero. Is there any objection to this item being finally passed? Seeing none, it is finally passed. Thank you. Alright, next up, agenda item number 22, Regional Stormwater Facilities Cost Sharing Agreement with North Hayes County MUD, number two, Plum Creek Development Partners, Mountain Plum, and Lennar of Texas Land for Construction. Mr. Sellers?
Thank you, gentlemen. Mayor, Council, Scott, set us for the record. What you have before you is a, an agreement that has taken quite a while to put together. We are very grateful that we have it together here by the, the last meeting in, in 2020. This is a, a tri-party agreement between Lennar, Mountain Plum, and the City of Kyle. In a nutshell, what, what this allows for is for a regional detention pond to be financed and constructed by the, the MUD and Lennar. When I say the MUD, this would be the, the MUD number two, North Hayes MUD. The pond is a 39-acre detention pond adjacent to the railroad tracks in Plum Creek North. The agreement stipulates that as this MUD is constructed, it will ultimately be dedicated to the City of Kyle, but the maintenance and inspections of the detention pond will be a, the responsibility of the Property Owner Association, or the dues payers within both Mountain Plum and Lennar. The City of Kyle would, has the, the ability to take that detention pond and actually convert it to soccer fields, and this has been discussed a little more actively in the, in the TERS meetings. Any sort of maintenance above detention pond would be the responsibility of the city or the TERS. Also, as part of this agreement, there's a 21-acre piece of land, which originally was going to be the more localized detention for Lennar and Mountain Plum. When it was determined that the culverts under 1626 could convey the water, and there was enough land for a larger regional pond, that 21 acres became a viable piece of, of parkland property. And as part of this agreement, when the city accepts the improvements to the pond, on or before that date, Lennar will, will deed over that 21 acres to the city. So that's really the, the meat of the agreement. It's the construction, the financing of the pond, as well as the dedication of that 21 acres to the City of Kyle, and as well as the 39 acres. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Councilor Rizzo?
Yes, Scott, Councilmember Rizzo, for the record, how long will the MUD be in place before they start paying back into the taxes?
This is a MUD that was really developed for a very specific purpose. It was to extend the, the water utilities, water and wastewater utilities through that area. As a matter of fact, the MUD wasn't anticipated to build the, the regional detention pond. So in the agreement, you'll see that the developer, Mountain Plum, is, is paying for the improvements for the pond and will be reimbursed by the MUD. There's also some, some road improvements in there as well. I believe this is a 20-year MUD, and I can't remember that the tax rate was said, I think it was 12 cents.
12 or 15.
Right. So, again, once, once the bond debt is defused within that MUD, then that, that smaller, this is an in-city MUD, so that, that smaller MUD assessment will go away.
Thank you, Scott.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? The, the actual agreement on the covenantal restrictions, that's further down, right?
No, this is part of the, the agreement, so thank you for bringing that up. As, as part of the agreement, you'll notice in the, I believe it's Appendix A or Anema, there are a series of restrictive covenants that are also part of this tri-party agreement. So the, the 21 acres is what these covenants refer to, and as the city moves forward and develops this area out as parkland, basically, those covenants stipulate that we have to follow our own parks, parks policy. But there are also a few other additional stipulations. City would be dedicating $150,000 through cash or fee credit waiver to the developer for the erection of a nicer fence, great type of fence to buffer the, the neighborhood from the park area. We also have 10 days of, of additional festival time when we can go beyond the, the traditional noise ordinance limitations that's set up in our, our current parks policy. We have the ability to have fireworks out at the site for 4th of July and New Year's. And then, there's, there's some limitations to what vertical structures can be built within 200 feet of the Lennar subdivision. So high mass lighting would not be able to be built within 200 feet, but that's fine because there's a, a larger drainage swale that's, that's closer to those residents than we weren't, we weren't planning on, on high vertical mass lighting in that area. Now, with that said, there's 21 acres. The city has a plan to, to develop out some of those acres, put some field space, put some lighting, some more permanent structures, bleachers, you know, concession areas, and then a, a large parking area. So this is part of a, an uptown plan that's been discussed publicly, and this transfer of, of property, as well as restrictive covenants to go with it, is the culmination of a lot of negotiation with, with the, the two development entities, and it opens the, the way for the city to begin programming that space. Hopefully, within 2021, we can have that, that done. I don't think the, the construction of the detention pond is going to take too long. That project has already been let. Those, the, the contractor's waiting for this, this meeting right now, this action from the council, to have the notice proceed, and then, once, once they have that notice, they're off to the races, and I, I don't believe it's, it's more than a few, you know, three, four months of, of construction for the pond. There will be another action item for the TERS Board related to this coming up on Thursday, but the City of Kyle is, is the party to this agreement here tonight.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions or comments? I'm very excited about this agreement. You know, this is something we've been working on for a long time.
Long time.
Really, it was always just kind of a dream and a thought that, you know, you know, it just feels pretty cool to take two different detention ponds, bring them into one, have the two parties figure out the cost share, and the city gets 21 acres as a result. So, that worked out pretty nicely for us, and I want to commend Lennar for working with us up till this point. They certainly could have been more hesitant than they were, and they, I think, by the time it was over, understood the value that we're trying to bring to that area. So I'm certainly grateful for that. Do you believe that these restrictions are with, put together in good faith with the intent of allowing for us to use that site in the way that we envision?
I do. Lennar, you know, not to put words in their mouth, but they have said how excited they are to be adjacent to this park, how, what a benefit to the residents of that Plum Creek North. Not sure there's a name for it yet. It was called Lennar...
It's Plum Creek North. It's on their signs.
Plum Creek North, okay, so Plum Creek North Development. And, you know, it will add real value to, to all involved. So, yeah, they, they did act in good faith, and they're, they're excited to see these improvements.
I'm glad to see that. I'm glad to see us finally get there on this, so... Any other comments? Motion to approve?
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Tobias, that we approve agenda item number 22. Is there any further, did I get it right? 22? Yes. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries, seven to zero. Next up, agenda item number 23, consider approval of an agreement regarding roadway and drainage improvements between the City of Kyle and the LaSalle Utility District Number One. Do we need to take multiple of these up together, or they're in the right order for us to take them up?
They're in the right order. If, if it's okay, I can talk about all three at once here.
So, hang on, it's 23, 4, and 5. You want me to bring them up together, or you just want to discuss them together?
Let me discuss them together, you can bring them up individually.
Okay.
So, what we have before us is, again, the culmination of quite a bit of work, and there are several parties. If you recall, we had a zoning item, which was the Spooner zoning. This is item 25. Passed on first reading, but there was a, a question brought up about the, the roadway serving the Spooner development. And council's been fairly clear in the past that large developments with a lot of traffic need to have a road network that can support those developments. While it was the intention of the parties to work together to, to build the roadway to service not only the Spooner development, but the LaSalle development, there was no agreement in place that would assure that these improvements would be made. With this said, we, we set upon drafting a, an agreement for the Sendera Group, which is your first item, or your second item, and LaSalle Group, which is your first item. These agreements not only address road issues, but they also address stormwater issues. I don't have a, a map to throw up on screen, I apologize for that. There is one in the packet to, to be referenced if, if council needs to. The LaSalle Group is, is also known as Waterstone, and this is the, the large MUD that's in the City of San Marcos, CTJ. The main boulevard accessing LaSalle or Waterstone would come from the northbound Frontage Road, through what the tract, as we know, is the Kyle Equities Tract, and then to Post Road. It's a two-lane road up to that point, and then it will expand to a four-lane road when all is said and done, and then move, move well into the MUD. LaSalle is, is on the hook, as part of this agreement, to acquire the Kyle Equities Tract and build a two-lane roadway to, to Post Road, and then continue that two-lane roadway with open ditch, all the way back into the LaSalle development. Now, our transportation master plan and our agreements actually show this road in the Spooner development being a four-lane roadway. That is encapsulated in the Sendera development, whereas the, the development gets underway and phases through its, its plan. They've got three years to build the additional two outside lanes with curb gutter and sidewalk. So at the end of the day, you'll have a very nice divided four-lane road, curb gutter and sidewalk, through this Sendera development.
So to clarify, Scott, when they build the two-lane road, it starts the clock, and they will have 36 months to complete the additional two lanes?
I believe it's when the first, the, the, I want to say the, the first plat or site development is, is approved.
The plat?
Yeah. Paige can jump in and, and correct me on that one. I believe it's when the first plat is approved. Paige?
Yes, I'm pulling the agreement up.
The first plat on the Spooner Tract?
On the Spooner Tract.
What about the LaSalle Tract?
Yeah, so, so for, for the Spooner Tract, the timing for building the Phase Two road, it has to occur upon the earlier, to occur of either they complete 50% of the subdivision improvements for approximately 50% of the property, which is about 80-platted lots, having been final-platted, or within three years from the date of approval of their preliminary plat.
That's good.
The, the LaSalle, to answer your next question, LaSalle is, has a, a shorter window to acquire the, the Kyle Equities piece, as well as to build that, that roadway, and that's 18 months to do that. So LaSalle would come in upon, I think everyone's waiting on, on this action tonight, on the zoning action in particular. And then, LaSalle has a little bit more with Texta on the driveway permit. That's not yet been approved, but we have assurance from Texta that it will be approved. And once they, they bring down that, that Kyle Equities piece, that roadway should be built within 18 months. The, the other piece of both of these agreements has to do with drainage, and for the council members who were here during some of the larger flooding events, 2015, 2017, you'll, you'll remember that the Quail Ridge subdivision on the, the east side and just south of this development had some, some pretty major flooding issues, and we've, we've definitely not ignored Quail Ridge. It's a high priority project in our storm drainage master plan. The, one of the big issues is the sheet flow of, of rain that comes through this Spooner property. And so, true, to address that, we, we threw that into this agreement as well. There will be three separate BURMs built as part of this development, and that will pick up... The, one of the big issues is the sheet flow of, of rain that comes through this Spooner property. And so, to, to address that, we, we threw that into this agreement as well. There will be three separate berm's built as part of this development, and that will pick up that sheet flow. Again, the road and associated stormwater facilities with the road will pick up a portion. The berm on the Spooner property will pick up and channel another piece to the east. At that point, the City of Kyle will, will build a berm called the Quail Ridge Berm, and LaSalle Group will build the LaSalle Berm. And basically, it will just create kind of a little funnel for all that, that stormwater to go down and, and ultimately drain into one of the ponds down on the Coleman property. So, the, there are certain obligations and timing issues within these agreements as well that stipulate when those berm's and when and how those berm's are built. So, before you, you have LaSalle building the roadway, acquiring property, building the roadway from northbound Frontage Road through the Spooner property. You have, and in building a berm, you have the Sanderah Group that is selling that land and then ultimately building the additional two lanes, as well as when they do their, their first phase plat, they will have all the associated onsite storm detention as well as the berm that they will be building. It is good to note that if LaSalle does not acquire this property, then Sanderah does need to acquire it. So, I know there was a question about a backstop. The portion from northbound Frontage Road to the, to Post Road will need to be built either by LaSalle, but again, if LaSalle can't do it, Sanderah will pick that up and, and do that project. And then finally, the city coming in as the third party, where we would build the, the Quail Ridge berm as well as some easements in Quail Ridge to, to widen the throat where the outfall is for that rain, and work with the developer, developers to accommodate all the, the storm drainage flow. And that should address that Quail Ridge flooding from external standpoint. There's crushed culverts and things like that within Quail Ridge that we're going to have to systematically go and fix, but the, the large portion of the flooding is occurring from outside the property as it, as it drains into the property. So, there's a lot of moving parts. It's, it's a really big agreement. I want to give credit to the Sanderah Group, the, the LaSalle Group. They've, they've done great. Paige has killed herself over the past couple of weeks to get all the agreements done in time, and, and they look great. So, with that, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions. And then, number 25 is the second reading of that zoning for.
We've seen, we've seen that one a few, a few times.
So, we're not asking to postpone it.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions for Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Councilman Flores, Cal.
I just have a few questions. This is in my area.
Yes, ma'am.
My neck of the woods. So, we are always real hesitant to start building homes without incomplete roads. So, a few things that I want to point out is there is just a letter of opposition in there from a resident who's concerned about the flooding. And then, as for me, some things I'd like to see, I mean, I'm not totally on board with this, but I haven't had enough time to review all the documents. In, in what I've reviewed, there's little words that kind of are bothersome, and I'd like to see maybe updated if we end up going with this. Words like "the city intends to," or "it is intended that Waterstone Boulevard will be expanded to a four-lane road." And then, in the, in item, number 24, it looks like it says, "Waterstone Boulevard will ultimately be a four, four-lane road." I think we need something more definitive if we're going to be building over there, because we know the roads over there are highly needs. And I'd also like to see in item number 23, information regarding the material that will be used. I, I didn't see it, and it might be in there, so if you want to point me to that, I would appreciate it. But as of now, I can't find anything that states what kind of material they're going to use to build these roads.
For the, for the roads? Yeah. Let me see if I can address some of your, your questions. And I'm going to look at Paige here to, to help me out, because we're dealing with a couple of different agreements. One would have more affirmative language, and the, the other would, would say kind of the lighter language, because it's not binding that party to do the improvement. The Exhibit E, I believe it is, in, in the agreement, shows the cross-section for the roadway of how it's to be built, but not including the material. That will come later as, as they follow the city's design guidelines or engineer guidelines for, for the roadway. That, you know, since we're still kind of at the, the zoning phase and, and the agreements are, are really just more conceptual, we're, we didn't get into the type of material, but I, I can probably surmise that we're looking at eastside clay, and you want to make sure that there, the base is sufficiently deep and, and of sufficient quality not to heave and, and crack. And that's something that, that as we core that area, so, you know, as they take down the property, core the area, we'll, we'll have some pretty good understanding of, of what those clay densities are, are showing. And we can stipulate from the engineering standpoint, the type of material, the, the class of rock and the, the depth of the base. Then we need to use some geo grid in there. We just don't really know until they go in and, and core that.
So, I guess my question is, we're going to agree, we're going to sign this agreement without knowing exactly what's going to go in it as far as building materials? Because once this is signed, there's like, no go back, right? And like?
Yeah, so the agreement will just stipulate that, that the roadway will be built, and then as we get more information and they go through the engineering process, we'll, we still have the ability to restrict or dictate, you know, the, the quality and the type of material.
Okay, as far as?
And I can.
Yes, sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt. I was just going to add to that if it's helpful. The agreement requires that the city approve the construction plans, and so, that's the, that's the time in which the city has control over the building materials and approves those through its construction plan approval process.
Okay, so, for item number 23, and I guess this is going to be for, for Paige, can we change some of that wording in there from like, that's second to last whereas on the first page? And I know it seems small, but this matters to the people who are going to be living over there. Instead of like, "the city intends to construct or cause to be constructed improvements," can they strike "intends to" and just say "will construct"? And then the third, whereas on the second page, "it is intended that Waterstone Boulevard will be expanded to a four-lane road," just put, you know, like, start it with "Waterstone will be expanded." Anything that is like intended, or maybe, or might, I think will cause a little bit of unrest with the, the residents. It's easier for me to explain to them why we're doing this when we have certainty.
Those changes aren't material from my standpoint. Those, those changes could be made there. I don't, I don't, we don't have the LaSalle Group in this meeting, I don't think, but I don't, I don't think those will be issues for them to change that, because Waterstone's planned to be a four-lane road. So, it's, the reason why it says "intends" is because it's, it's not the mud's obligation to build the four lane. That's going to be over in the other Sanderah agreement. So, but it's not, it's not a material issue to change those two whereas clauses to say "well, will" instead of "intends."
Okay, so then in item number 24, where the whereas, "Waterstone Boulevard will ultimately be a four-lane road," that's, you guys just said it would be 33, like 36 ponds or three. Can we put that language in there?
So, so what you're reading in the first whereases is called a preamble?
Oh, no, it's not the first whereas. It's the one, two, three, four, fifth whereas.
Right. The, so all those whereases are the preamble, the, the, kind of the meat that holds them accountable to the timing and, you know, the how of the document is in the now, therefore sections beyond the preamble. So, we can, we can solidify the language in the preamble, but like Paige said, it's, it's usually, you know, non-material because it's just describing the project. The, the meat of the agreement has.
Section, I would, I would direct point to section four. You know, "The district shall design, obtain permits for and construct the berm. The city shall obtain drainage easements. Prior to the construction of the LaSalle berm, the district shall submit to the city and obtain approval." So, those are, that's where the, for Quail Ridge, it's about as airtight in there as, as we've put together in some time.
Yes.
It's pretty impressive, actually. But I, I understand your point, because that is where those contracts fall apart, is on those, those particular words. Paige has heard that from me a few times as well.
Hi, thank you.
We know the difference between may and shall. So do the, so do the contractors, and so do the developers. That's right.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Any other comments? Mayor Protim.
This question's for Paige. I might have missed it earlier. I didn't hear what you said about when the development can, the construction can actually begin, but I just want to make sure I understand this correctly. Can the Sanderah land development begin construction before the Kyle Equities Tract is acquired?
So, we have in the, I'm, 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 okay. So, we have in the Sanderah agreement that if the Kyle Equities Tract is not acquired within 12 months, that they have to acquire it, and they have to, in order to get construction plans approved, they have to have that Kyle Equities Tract acquired. And so, they can't subdivide the land if they can't get construction plan approval. So, so that's where the, kind of the backstop is there, is that at the 12-month mark, Kyle Equities has to be acquired by somebody, and that's going to be a requirement of the, of the construction plan approval. There's also, so we have kind of a Plan A and a Plan B. So, if the LaSalle mud does not build the road, and does not acquire the Kyle Equities Tract, the Plan B is for Sanderah to acquire that Kyle Equities Tract and build the Phase One road. And that would be their obligation, and it would replace their obligation to build the Phase Two road. And then they have timeframes for acquiring that Kyle Equities Tract, and they would have to include the Phase One road in their construction plans in the first phase. And then they build, they build out that road as their project builds out, but the Kyle Equities portion has to be built in the first phase. So, we, we describe these, these timeframes in the agreement. And then we also have in our default clause that, you know, if they fail to comply with the term of the agreement, you can always give them notice of default and enforce the agreement through a lawsuit. But then, you can also withhold any development-related permits and approvals for the development until they cure the default.
So, Phase One of the road, that includes the part that would run through the Kyle Equities Tract?
Yes.
Okay. That has to be done concurrently all the way through to 35.
Right. And, and the way the timing would work on their project is, it'd have to be part of their construction plans that they submit, either right before they final plat or, or when they final plat. And so, that Kyle Equities Tract has to be acquired at the time that they're submitting their construction plans. They can't get past that phase until it's acquired. And then after that, they have to build it as part of their subdivision phasing.
Thank you, Paige.
Sure.
Paige, one more question. You said that if LaSalle took responsibility for the roadway, they would only be required to build the first phase? How long before they would come into the second phase? Because that pushes the timeline further on them, correct?
So, so I'm going to break this down into two parts. First, we have, if, if everything works the way it's supposed to, this is how it works. LaSalle mud builds the Phase One road, which is the two lanes, two initial first lines plus the, I guess, open, open swale drainage. They have to build that road within 18 months of the effective date of the agreement. So, that would be when everybody approves it. If, after that, then the next timing is the construction of the Phase Two road, which is to expand it to the full four, four lanes. And that's based on, it's three years within, within three years of approval of the preliminary plat for the Sanderah Spooner Tract, or when they get to 50% of platted lots. And so, that's, that's the timeframe for building the Phase Two road. So, that's if, if everything works as proposed under Plan A. Plan B is if the, for some reason, LaSalle mud doesn't get Kyle, Kyle Equities Tract acquired and doesn't get the, doesn't get the, the road built, then what happens is the obligation to build the Phase One road, that goes over to, that becomes Sanderah's obligation, and they have to build that as part of their, through, as part of their platting process. And that'll be driven by just how quickly they move on, on their platting processes. But if they want to, if they want to develop their property, they have to build that road.
The four.
The Phase Two, but, but what happens is, yeah, they, if, if the mud's not building Phase One for some reason, then, then the Sanderah Group builds the Phase One road. And we don't, these agreements don't address Phase Two being built at this time, if that's what happened.
The, the logic there is if, if the mud fails to materialize, then Sanderah wouldn't need a four-lane road.
Wouldn't have that front development. Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Questions? Comments?
Motion to approve. What item number are we?
22.
Motion to approve item 22.
It's been moved by Mayor Protim Coach, seconded by Councilmember Rizzo, that we approve Agenda Item Number 22.
It's 23, correct?
23.
This is.
23.
23.
Motion to approve 23.
Second.
Okay. It's been motion by Mayor Protim Coach, seconded by Councilmember Rizzo, that we approve Agenda Item Number 23. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, Agenda Item Number 24. Consider approval of an agreement regarding roadway drainage improvements, Spooner Tract. Anything to add on this one?
Yes, sir.
Questions? Comments? Motions?
Scott, I, I do want to thank you for all the work and thought that you guys put into the drainage aspect of this agreement as well. I think that's going to work out really well for Quail Ridge, so, good job on that.
Yes, Scott did a great job in the, the one meeting that I was a part of, like, and he went to bat for Quail Ridge to make sure that the drainage improvements got solved as a result of this. It was pretty cool to watch. So, you did a great job. I agree with that.
Scott, you know, my concern was always just getting that road all the way to 35. And so, I think you guys did a good job, but the drainage is, is kind of really the, the cherry on top for you, so.
It is.
A motion to approve Agenda Item 24.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Protim Coach, seconded by Councilmember Rizzo, that we approve Agenda Item Number 24. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. And number 25, anybody want to postpone this one? Agenda Item Number 25, second reading. An ordinance amending Chapter 53 zoning of the City of Kyle, Texas for the purpose of assigning original zoning to approximately 128.58 acres of land from agricultural to single-family residential R13, and approximately 30.27 acres of land from R1T to R1T, and approximately 20.37 acres of land to community commercial for property located off East Post Road just north of Quail Ridge subdivision. This is second reading. We postponed. It was approved by, 6-0 by Planning and Zoning, 6-1 by council sometime many months ago. Is there any discussion on this zoning item?
I had a question.
Councilmember Brechau.
So, I saw in the letter of opposition that, that flooding is an issue, and I was just curious if the, if item number 24 would alleviate her concerns.
Here, here's the, the little unspoken part. So, 24 really includes the berm aspect as well as the roadway drainage aspects. There's a little piece in there that talks about additional drainage infrastructure that will need to be approved as part of the regular developments or subdivision process. So, in, in subdivision approvals... So in, in subdivision approvals, you can't add more water to the, the adjacent property than, than was prior to the development, basically. And you can't point source more to a certain area that's not equipped to receive that water. So there may be some onsite detention. There will be onsite detention that the developers will need to build. That will come as part of the subdivision process as they go through, you know, with, with planning. So the berms will handle the large sheet flow. The road will handle the sheet flow. But the, the additional flooding aspects that, that would occur onsite would be handled by the onsite detention to ensure that, that there's not other water coming off of there into Quail Ridge. So, so it's kind of a two-part answer, but the answer is yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
A question real quick, Councilman Tobias, for the record. I guess the original reading we had, first reading, we had a six one. And again, might be concerned in that area as well is the roads. It's always going to be the roads. Because as you can see, what we're having trouble with right now with Bunton and Goforth and all those back there. Those roads, again, are, are about the same. So again, it just concerns me again when we're, we're looking at building more homes out there and these roads are still need a repair. Would there be a consideration later on as far as looking at one fifty-eight? Is that county or is that city to expanding that? Because it would seem like we'll be back in that same boat five years from now, once those houses, or if these houses get built. We have some major road construction issues going on and we're stuck again. And again, if there's flooding, still looking at the map, where do you get out? And how do you get in? From a public safety standpoint on that end.
Is your question about, well, here, let me, let me answer the first part of that first. Originally, there was real conversation about utilizing one fifty-eight. For those who don't know, one fifty-eight's actually a very long road, but it, it snakes east-west and then ultimately does a, a pretty hard curve south, north to south. When we, we talked to the developer about one fifty-eight and it being an old county road, you know, we looked at it. We talked to the county, met with the county on it. The developer understood at that point that utilizing one fifty-eight as an access into the development was not going to work. And so this whole Waterstone Boulevard was a plan to avoid exactly what you were talking about. It was to create a brand-new, high-volume, high-capacity roadway to, and, and the road, the land plan itself, if you look at the, the plan for the mud, it attempts to funnel traffic to that Waterstone Boulevard instead of one fifty-eight. So this, this was the way to, to prevent what, what's happening elsewhere with old county roads. And then the one-way and one-way out, you know, Waterstone itself has a, a variety of lakes and, you know, it's, it, it's being built for flooding. I think that the bigger issue is the Quail Ridge subdivision and this, this will only improve Quail Ridge and, and by a, a heavy factor.
Thank you.
I, I kind of want to piggyback off Councilor Tobias. So if you look at the Waterstone map, they're, they've got a completely new one fifty-eight. So that, that hardcore L that it makes, or S or whatever, is smoothed out. So what portion of that is Waterstone going to be paying for? Just the, any of it or their bounds or? How's that work?
I'm not sure. Further east, because that's in the county. When it comes closer to, when it gets into the city limits, none of it. So there, Waterstone's not going to be improving one fifty-eight.
Just, just the portion in front of their project, I assume?
Correct.
Okay.
You know, not to belabor it, but, you know, once we do see development occur there and look at those traffic patterns, there will most likely be a CIP project that the city will have for one fifty-eight. We know that as part of the post-road construction of, you know, in front of the church, you know, as it comes south, that, that little skewed intersection's going to be straightened out. So there will be more traffic flowing to, to one fifty-eight from the north and the south. There will come a time when we have to add that, that piece to the city's capital improvement plan.
Any other questions, comments? Motion to approve.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item number twenty-five.
Second.
Okay. It's been motioned and seconded that, by, a motion by Councilor Rizzo, seconded by Councilor Bradshaw, that we approve agenda item number twenty-five. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries five to two. All right, next up, agenda item number twenty-six. Consider impossible action regarding entering into a design-build contract with Canes McShane for one oh four South Burleson. This has Mr. Earp, but I believe he's on vacation.
Yes, I don't believe he's, he's jumped in. Can someone confirm that? I think he would jump in by now. Paige, do you mind starting on this? We, we talked about this earlier, how we're going to handle it.
Mayor and council, Paige signs for the record. This agreement allows the city council to enter into a contract with Canes McShane as the design-build contractor for the one oh four South Burleson project. The architect is identified in the, in the agreement as well. That's the.
Edmondson Flynn?
The ERA, yes, ERA Architect Group. And there's, once you enter into agreement, there, there will be a few phases. The first phase involves a pre-design, a pre-design phase where the, the scope of the project is, is identified in a bit more detail that is at no cost to the city. And then there will be a design phase that, in which the architect prepares the plans and specs for the project in which, that will be used to construct the project. And then there's a construction phase in which those plans are brought to fruition with the, in accordance with the design plans. The budget in the agreement is set at two point five million dollars. And if there are any changes in the budget, those will come before council for approval.
So just to add a little more context to the budget number. As councilor calls, I believe it was last meeting or maybe two ago, where we discussed the landscaping portion of, of the agreement. This, this, what you have before you is, is for the construction, but it does include some portion of landscaping, which Coleman and Associates will also be assisting with. The, the agreement for the landscaping piece for, for the central square or the city square park was around a million dollars from a budgetary standpoint. This being a two-and-a-half million dollar budget for the building, the, the question naturally arises, well, how are we going to pay for an additional million dollars of improvement when we, we talked about the Kinder Morgan check paying two-and-a-half million dollars for the project? And this is a three-and-a-half million dollar project overall. The answer, a couple of answers, but the, the first and most likely answer is when the city council approved the budget for this fiscal year, it included out of the general fund, the amount of the project of the two-and-a-half million dollars. Not knowing if and when we were going to receive the monies from Kinder Morgan, the budget, again, includes from the general fund, the two-and-a-half million. So we did receive that check much sooner than expected. And so there's the two-and-a-half million dollars of additional revenue plus the two-and-a-half million dollars in the, the general fund budgeted for this, this fiscal year. So the money is there in the budget. In fact, there's, there's more money in the budget.
I think I just heard you say we have a five million dollar project, but I'm not sure.
So the, there's, there's money.
Currently in the budget.
In, in the budget. Now, the, the plan for how the council wishes to reimburse the general fund is, is up to future budgetary conversation.
The budget on this particular item, though, will come back to us in the future?
In, in the future, yes.
Awarding of the actual contract for construction?
Only, so we, we stipulated the budget of two-and-a-half million dollars in this contract. It would come back to council if we anticipated any overrun beyond the two-and-a-half million. Otherwise, we don't anticipate bringing it back.
Okay. What about the design elements? We have, sort of, we have a concept right now, but I'm, I'm quite certain the task force and members of council are going to want to have some shaping input on how the building turns out.
Right. So at this point, the, the, the contract really takes what was previously done by Edmondson Reed, ERA. They've now changed their name to Edmondson Flynn. And the, the additional cost estimating of the design will continue through the next round of, I can't remember the name of the word, maybe Don can help me. There's a, a technical document that, that we ultimately have to agree upon with, with Canes McShane to, to get that and the, the two-and-a-half million dollar budget. So that will come very quickly, we hope, in the next two to three weeks.
That won't be designed, Doc, so. I'm saying, how do we have?
It will be estimated.
Creative input on the design itself.
Yes. Okay, so good point. That's more of a, of a GMP answer. I was giving guarantee maximum price. The design, yes, there's a, a task force that's been looking at the design. That task force will continue to help oversee the, the design and it will continue to come back to council as we go through the project.
Okay. Any questions for staff or Don? Motion?
Motion. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda item number twenty-six.
Second. It's been moved by Councilmember Rizzo, seconded by the mayor, that we approve agenda item number twenty-six. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries six to one. Next up, agenda item number twenty-seven. Consider a request for three waivers to allow a two-lot subdivision in the City of Kyle's ETJ at twenty-four hundred Wendy Hill Road. Mr. Coons?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. For the record, my name is Howard Coons. I am the Director of Planning and Community Development for the City of Kyle. This action is related to a subdivision on Wendy Hill and I'm going to, if you'll bear with me for a second, I'm going to share my screen. Here, there. Okay. So you should be looking at a subdivision plat right now. And Wendy Hill is over here on the left side. North is predominantly up. I guess I'd say up and to the left. Here's a location map. So this is the Matthias Lane, bias however that's pronounced. This is Wendy Hill. So this is the project site and it's currently owned by two family members who seek to divide this lot into, so that one can own one existing structure and the other can own the other existing structure, fee simple and separately. It is considered by our subdivision regulations as a rural lot. So the rural lot requirements are that the lot have a hundred and thirty feet of road frontage, also have an acre of land available to it, and there are some other more minor requirements. This request before you seeks three, actually, I guess they'd be waivers because they're in the subdivision ordinance, that relate to the division of these lots and for a reason that they're non-standard. Lots have to have a front property line of a hundred and thirty feet. And these ones do, do not. The lot number one will have a frontage of just over eighty-five feet and lot number two will have a frontage of just over eighty-seven feet. Additionally, the side lot lines are required to be primarily at right angles to the, the road to which they are adjacent. And you can see that there's a little bit of an angle on, on the way that that one was drawn. That's due to existing improvements on the lot as it exists today. And then lastly, the ratio of lot depth to the average lot width should not be greater than five to one. So basically, what you're trying to do there is prevent these from being incredibly narrow but incredibly deep in an effort to meet minimum acreage. And the minimum, the average lot width of these lots is a little bit deeper than what we would ordinarily permit as record in Chapter Forty-one. So staff has found no potential threat to the health, safety and welfare of the city at large or the surrounding neighborhoods. This is being done mostly because you can see that most of this, the improvements are, are in an area that is not buildable. And so the, the area that is buildable is near the rear of the lots, away from the street and a little bit up in the front. So I can make myself available for any comments you might have.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Coons?
I just have a question. Are there homes already on this land?
Yes, ma'am. These, these lots are, are developed, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
This is Councilman Tobias. Howard, real quick, this applicant here pretty much followed all, all the guidelines of what the city's been asking for and does it look like there shouldn't be any problem with any of the feet in the diver that they're asking for?
They have met all the standards in our subdivision regulations that they are able, everything but these three. These last three, staff does not have the ability to permit this plat as drawn because it is non-standard per Chapter Forty-one, so it has to come to you. So they, they've done everything they can and staff has looked at it and decided that, I mean, both of the lots are in excess of eighty feet, which is more than most every residential lot that's in the City of Kyle. So this, we have, we haven't found any danger to the health, safety and welfare of the community.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Howard, can you go back to the, the map? The, so where, where exactly is this? I'm just concerned, my only concern is the, the lot lines get pretty close together there for lot number one.
It's in our ETJ. It's, it's, it's further out on Wendy Hill. It's, so this is Shadow Creek Boulevard. And this is Matthias or Matthias, I'm not sure how it's pronounced. I've never heard it spoken.
That's where I'm at, but I'm, so there's a big lake. I don't see the homes, is what I'm trying to say. It surprised me because I thought I knew where the lot was.
Uh, I mean, if you want to give me a second, I can, I can dig up an aerial photo for you. Shouldn't, shouldn't take me that long.
It does look like there's a pond right near it, I believe. That's what you're looking at.
There is, in, in the front, up near the street.
Yes.
There is a water feature. And then the, the, the structures are behind that. Ooh, not too far. So I'm going to, I'm going to again, share this screen with you. Okay, so this is a very far out aerial. So what, what you've got here, this is Wendy Hill. Comes through here. This is Dacey. Wait a second, Dacey. So you, as you come past that, this is, uh, just went out of my head.
Shadow Creek.
I'm sorry. Uh, Shadow Creek. Yes, sorry. This is Shadow Creek. And then this is the new KB project. I believe it's called South Grove. It's over here. And then the, the, the site in question is right here. So as I, as I start to move in a little bit, there's a, an issue with the, the lot lines aren't on this. This, I don't have the lot lines to superimpose over this. But these are the existing structures as they are back here. And then this is the, the water feature in the front. And then there's a, a fair amount of floodway or floodplain that comes through here that's indicated on the, on this plat here. So there'd be a shared ingress egress easement for both of the lots. They'll come in from this side. They'll come in from this side to get around the water feature. And then you can see some of the fence line, the existing fence line that's in there matches up with some of the lines that they're using now.
I recognize that area. Used to have a horse ranch out there.
Yeah, the the scale is somewhat deceptive. It's a it's a little tough to be.
It's hard to it's hard to visualize.
Or somebody's distances are.
So lot number one will not have a a structure on it, but lot number two is where the the house and sheds are?
I believe that's correct, yes.
Okay. I'm good, thank you. Any other questions for Howard, comments? Motions?
I'd like to make a motion to consider a request for number, agenda number 27, three waivers to allow the two lot subdivision.
Second.
It's been motion by Councilmember Tobias, seconded by Councilmember Rizzo, that we approve agenda item number 27. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero. All right, next up, agenda item number 28, resolution of the city of Kyle, Texas, accepting the petition for annexation of 29.792 acres, more or less, of land located in Hayes County, Texas, related to Casseta Ranch. Mr. Coons, go ahead.
This is actually a ministerial function of a previously approved development agreement. This is a property that was outside of the city, and with most of our development agreements, any application for development is generally a trigger for a voluntary annexation. So this resolution that you're looking at this evening basically sets that annexation schedule for the for the voluntary annexation to occur and lets you know the upcoming schedule and the meetings that are required by state law. So you're you're basically accepting the idea that it's going to come forward at a public hearing at a point in the future.
Thank you. Any questions? Comments? Motions?
Motion to approve consent agenda item 28.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Rizzo, seconded by Councilmember Bradshaw, that we approve agenda item number 28. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, agenda item number 29, consider approval of an addendum to the developer and annexation agreement for Texas Lehigh properties. Mr. Sellers?
Council, 15 years ago, the city of Kyle entered into an agreement for 15 years with Texas Lehigh, which is the quarry just north of Kohler's Crossing. That agreement is about to expire. That was a, an agreement that basically stipulated that the quarry would would operate without the city annexing that area. We are working to update that document, need a little bit more time, and so what we are asking the council to do tonight is to to approve a six-month addition to the existing agreement. This is just a quick addendum, and then we'll bring back another longer-term annexation agreement in the future.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Sellers? Comments? Motions?
Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve, oh my gosh, I lost. Yes, thank you, to approve the exemption, or I'm sorry, extension.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Bradshaw, seconded by Councilmember Tobias, that we approve agenda item number 29. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed.
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, agenda item number 30, direct the city manager to negotiate an agreement with AGCM Inc. for owner's rep services for the Kyle Public Safety Center. Mr. Sellers?
Counsel, for those of you who recall the last TERS meeting, we talked about incorporating the use of an owner's representative or a project manager for the two large projects in Uptown that are TERS projects, the Central Park as well as the Heroes Memorial Park. We had also discussed the possibility of of adding a third project, which is the Public Safety Center, into the responsibility for the owner's rep, at which time it was decided to do so and to have a small owner's rep task force sit in and interview applicants. And RFQ was was sent out directly to four owner's representative firms. Those four firms were interviewed, and AGCM was the top choice from the task force. So with that, we do have an agreement in front of you to bring in AGCM for owner's rep services for the Public Safety Center. The the timing, the timeline of this center is very similar to the timing of these two projects in in Uptown, so we're we're hoping we can keep them all basically moving quickly on a on a similar track, on time and on budget, and that's really the the responsibility of an owner's rep. Ryan Rosborough with AGCM is available in case you do have questions for him, and otherwise we recommend approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions for Mr. Sellers?
I don't have any questions, but I just want to say for the council members who were not on those interviews, I was a part of that task force, and AGCM did an incredible job in their presentation. They have extensive experience in both projects with parks and public safety centers, and they are also experienced in working with TERS as well, which I thought was another bonus. I am really excited about this firm, and I just wanted to share that with my fellow council members who were not able to listen into those interviews.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts or comments? Just to clarify, Scott, this is directing you to negotiate an agreement with them? They will come back at the next meeting or?
Yes, so that that is correct. This is just to negotiate, a similar action will be forthcoming at the TERS meeting Thursday, so yes, this is just negotiating.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Motions?
Mayor, I'd like to go and make a motion to approve the direct to city manager to negotiate the agreement with AGCM Incorporated. Agenda number 30, please.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Tobias, seconded by Councilmember Bradshaw, that we approve agenda item number 30. Is there any further discussion? Mayor Proto. Were you just going to motion? Rick, okay. Anyone else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, agenda item number 31, consider approval of an encroachment agreement between the LCRA, North Hayes Mudd District Number Two, and the city of Kyle. Ms. Sands.
Mayor and Council, Paige Sands, city attorney for the record. This agreement is an agreement between the LCRA and the North Hayes County Municipal District Number Two, with the city consenting to the terms. The Mudd is building a waterline facility and a roadway for Plum Creek Marketplace Avenue, Phase Two. The roadway and the waterline will cross an LCRA easement and pipeline, and because of that, LCRA needs to to give consent to the location of those improvements within that easement and address issues related to safety and preservation of the facilities that LCRA owns within that that easement area. And so this license agreement sets out the terms and conditions upon which those improvements can be located in that easement and can remain there. At such time as the Mudd completes the road and the waterline, those facilities will be conveyed to the city, and then the city will step into the shoes of the Mudd as far as the obligations under this agreement. There are some things that are different, though, and are set out in the city's consent enjoinder, and that modifies certain conditions that are in the agreement with the Mudd and LCRA related to, related to insurance requirements indemnification, and then LCRA and the city cooperating in the event that there needs to be emergencies or construction issues need to be dealt with as far as either party needing to repair work or lines within that that easement or right of way.
Thank you, Paige. Anyone have any questions on the agreement? Comments? Motions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve consent, I mean, agenda item number 31. Sorry.
Second.
It's been motion by Councilmember Rizzo, seconded by Councilmember Floris Cale, that we approve agenda item number 31. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, agenda item number 32, consider request by Rick Hanna of the Blackburn Group to have front setback exception granted per section 53-33K to reduce the front setback for certain residential lots in the Brooks Ranch sub-division located directly behind and southwest of the homes on Mather, Plum Creek, and West FM 150. This is Mr. Coons's item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I again, I'm going to share my screen just to make this a little bit simpler. So the request before you this evening is to allow for the homes that are highlighted here, should say the home sites that are highlighted here in red on this overall preliminary plan. They would like to be able to reduce the front yard setback on these homes in an effort to pull the home closer to the street, which will open up the opportunity for larger backyards. As you read in the staff memo, they have some constraints that are related to the depth of the backyards as a function of the amount of yard they have and the amount of structure that they'll place on it, and occasionally there are some changes in grade that will also cause some impediments that won't allow for the use of a backyard. So what they'd like to do, most of these requests are for this section that backs up to the existing alley that's just to the south or I'd call it the, or I'm sorry, the northwest of Mather, but it's the alley behind the homes that front on Mather. They're trying to move the new homes further away from the existing improvements that are back there and move it interior to their own site. So staff has reviewed this request. It's a, at most, a four-foot adjustment on the homes, pulling them away from the exterior property lines and moving them towards the interior of the development site. And so for that reason, staff has found it worthy of support and would encourage the mayor and council to support the request as it's been presented.
Thank you, Mr. Coons. Does anyone have any questions? Councilor Rizzo.
So, Howard, looking at the site plan, it looked like the backyards were going to be about seven foot, the depth in them, and this would open up to maybe 10-foot, 11-foot, correct?
It could, yeah, absolutely. So what I've got up here is a is a representative house location plan. It does indicate that it's lot seven, but ironically, lot seven is not one of the requested lots, so you can just ignore that part, but the rest of the of the numbers here are good. You can see the overall depth of these lots is about 110, and when you factor in easements and setbacks, what you've got is a building envelope that's indicated here as being dashed lines, and currently, they have a requirement that the front of the home encroach no closer than 20 feet to the front property line, not the curb, which is actually a good dip, a good deal further out here, but actually the property line itself. And then if you look at the overall footprint of the structure, that leaves a rear yard in the neighborhood of seven feet. So in some instances where they have single-story homes that have larger footprints, they'd like to slide this entire building on this drawing to the left, four feet, which would open up a backyard to have at least 11 feet back there as opposed to the way that it's designed right now.
Thank you, Howard. Yeah, I I kind of agree with that. Some foot backyard is nothing to be able to give those future homeowners a place to finally unwind, especially we've seen during COVID that we we need some outdoor space to give them something even in their backyard with a little solitude where the kids could come out and run and be away from the computer and everything else would be great. I I don't see any issues with this. I think actually want to thank Mr. Hanna for bringing this forward and seeing that the families would probably benefit from this move, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rizzo. Any other questions? Comments?
I have a question. I am all, this is Councilmember Floris Cale for the record. I'm all for big backyards, or bigger backyards, but I just want to make sure that the road in front of them is not like 150, where you can go 155 miles an hour. What, do you know what the speed limit is in that?
This will be an interior, this, these homes will be moving closer to the streets that are interior to the subdivision, so I'm going to expect that the design speed would probably be 25.
Perfect.
These are very minor, you know, interior subdivision, local residential streets.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Howard, my question's the driveway. Is the driveway length going to be shortened? I can't quite figure it out. I see the 40-foot driveway, which is a good-sized driveway, but is the, moving the home forward cutting into that?
It would, yes.
And what is it being reduced to?
Well, all all these numbers that are on the left side of the home would be reduced by no more than four feet, so this one would go from 40 to 35.
35 or 36? Because you're almost at 40.
Now, this this here is 40 feet, 39.97 is effectively 40 feet, and if if you are reducing it by no more than four feet, 40 from four is is 36.
Yeah, you said 35.
I kind of like 36 better than 40.
36 better, yeah, 36 better.
Because 36 is better than 40, because 40, you'll you'll get two vehicles and stick out into the street, but 36, I don't think you can, I don't think you can put two vehicles in back to back on that driveway, but easily one, comfortably one, with the sidewalk still in place. Okay, I'm I'm okay with that. We've we've, I've had a lot of complaints and personally feel the same way that you have to have a certain amount of a driveway in order for it to make sense, and if you don't give them a driveway, they don't, they just park on the street, which defeats the purpose of the driveway in the first place, so. Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? I'll move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Rizzo, that we approve.
Agenda item number 37.
Agenda item number 32. That's okay. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries six to zero. All right, next up, that's it. City managers' report. Thank you.
All right. Counsel, your favorite time of the the meeting? City manager's report?
I keep moving it around, but it always gets pushed to the end in the end.
It's okay. It's all right.
It kept getting more and more beefy as the iterations of the agenda came forward.
Scott, we just like to save the best for last.
Absolutely.
And by the way, it's 9:07 PM. Just, that's an incredible agenda to get through in two, two hours. That's never happened before, so.
It's been a great meeting. First on the the agenda tonight is the Kyle Street sign online auction, and you can see some of those signs that are in our our surplus scrap pile. So we've had several requests over the last little while to take some of our old street signs and instead of just recycling them, which we have, which we've done in the past, but actually make them available for for people that want to acquire them. For example, here's one right here, Sheel Street. There may be someone who who may want to buy that.
Nobody else did on that one.
I think 30 bucks ought to get that one, Tracy.
Yeah, I hope so.
So you can see we've got 50 signs that were in our our scrap pile. We we put them to better use by by auctioning them off. If they're not auctioned off over the next couple of days in our online auction, then we will continue to hang on to those, make those available in our Kyle store. So there you go. Next up is the curative COVID-19 mobile testing. We are still offering that service. However, both identification and registration is now required. There are a lot of individuals that are getting tested, and so they've changed it just from a walk-up to mandatory registration and ID. It is still free. Insurance is not required. I believe they're asking for insurance, but it's not required. They will not be there the Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, New Year's Eve, New Year's Day, so those those holiday days, the van will not be there. But otherwise, please, if you feel you have COVID, make your registration appointment and and get tested.
Scott, could I add to that?
Yes, sir.
Just letting you know that this past weekend, we had the COVID testing over at It went really quickly, it was efficient, and we also had the PPE distribution as well, and so it, and we gave them a lot of literature, you know, for preventive care, so I, I think it was a great event, and I hope we can continue to do that.
Great, thank you, Mayor. As discussed by council, recent, in recent meetings, we, we took your suggestions to heart, and we created a project page for the Mary Kyle Harton City Square Park. We have snippets from the, the presentation and, and project information on that page, so we are asking our residents to leave feedback at any point, and not just wait for an open house, but this is basically an ongoing forum for an open house. You will probably ask me if we're still going to have an open house beyond this, this feedback. That's a good question. I, I don't have that answer, and I was hoping to look to you to see if that was something we were, we were still going to do beyond just the online open house.
Say, say that again, Scott, I'm sorry, I didn't quite get the question.
So the question is, do you still want to have an actual virtual open house in addition to?
Well, I will say that Ann's presentation was pretty fantastic. And having that clipped and being able to show, I mean, it's, it is the presentation she would give, and so it's kind of available now, and I know that comms did a good job. So for myself, that was pretty good. I think we still need to engage on, on some level, but I have concerns about what, what the goal of that meeting would be and what, how it would affect the project timeline, so that's my feedback. Does anyone else have thoughts on that?
I can add to that, just on this project page, we do have a feedback forum, basically the availability for public to leave their feedback, so we are soliciting comments.
Can I suggest that we also stick this on the Facebook? I think we get a lot of posts, I mean, I, I'm not a super big fan of, oh, it's on there? I don't know if it was or not. Yeah, that's, I think that's where we get a lot of feedback from, so if we can all share it, that's even more.
Great. We can do that.
Yeah, it's on the Facebook page. Our communications department has done a great job with that, and I've shared it as well. I, I agree with the mayor, this is, the presentation that we had from Ann was fantastic last meeting, and I think that's the ability we have with everything being done in City Hall is recorded and, and can be viewed at any time, and I think she did a great job with that presentation. I think if we continue to just push that presentation, and, and I appreciate the ability for there to be feedback as well on that, my, my thoughts would be this, this is a strong way to get that, get that opportunity, and hopefully, I'm not sure if we have any feedback already, but I certainly would encourage my colleagues to continue to share that with their, with their platforms.
Scott, and that's a clip that we're sharing, correct? Not the entire meeting?
Yes, sir.
So I'd like to have that clip air on our Channel 10 as well, because I know that I, I've been getting a lot of good feedback from the Channel 10, so we could do that, it also adds some programming to it as well.
Yes, sir. Okay, great, thanks for that feedback. The next item is the Kyle's Care, Kyle Cares Grant. We have officially suspended applications to comply with the deadlines imposed on us by TDM, so the, the program has been a great success, thanks to the council. We've heard great feedback from those who have utilized it. Parks and Recreation Holiday Programming, as you can see, we've, we've had a few different events already. The lights are, are on every night at the square, great, great turnout from the public each night that, that I've been by. I know several of you have been by multiple times the square, it's, it's fantastic, and huge kudos to our, our Parks and Recreation Department for what they've done on the square. That continues through January 3rd, and then a much-needed break for those, those folks. The virtual Santa visits, we've, we've gone through a couple, we've got one more, and those, from what I've heard, have been quite the success as well. Santa did visit neighborhoods at December 5th and December 12th. I, I happen to be driving on the road when I saw Santa pull out right in front of me, and it looked like there were a lot of people that were excited to see Santa. I'm glad that he stayed in his chair in the trailer, but a great, great opportunity to get Santa through our, our neighborhoods in Kyle. And then finally, we have the North Pole mailbox, so please drop your letter in the North Pole mailbox by December 23rd. That mailbox is located at, at Lake Kyle, and you see those hours available. Here's some pictures for you. There's some kudos, Parks and Rec, Environmental Services, Communications, Finance, Public Works, everyone did a great job, council obviously, really couldn't be more proud. We have holiday office closures, Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, and New Year's Day. And finally, I did send out a, an email to council, it is that time to be considering dates for our 2021 Annual City Council Visioning Workshop. February, March timeframe, as, as the council recalls, this was a great opportunity to, to really kick us off from the budget perspective and set priorities. Now, this year being a little different, we're, we're still unsure of what COVID's going to do, so what we're looking at is look for a date, try to find a location that's going to allow us to be very safe, socially distanced, and then I will reach out to facilitators to see who's, who's available and the date you select. So with that, it really is more of a question for council, your availability and desire for that workshop.
We've been talking about February and March.
February, March timeframe.
Till this point, does anybody have any absolute weekend dates that are, are no-gos?
I don't have a no-go, but I, I'd like to see March, one reason it, it, as we get further with the vaccines, it'd probably give us a, a better feel of what the climate's going to be like. It's going to be a year in March that COVID hit us, and I, I'd like to start off a workshop with saying that COVID is soon, will soon be a thing of the past, hopefully. I'm praying on it.
That's all good.
Can we also keep in mind that March is spring break?
Yeah, it's a super busy month. That's the challenge of March, yeah.
No, no, I'm fine with that, I just want to make sure maybe the, the ending towards...
Towards, towards the beginning or towards the end?
I would say towards the end, because it's further from the vaccination date, plus, you know, we can already have our, I'm going to have my kids for a week, so I'm pretty sure I'm going to want to be away.
So we're talking 20th or the 27th?
Yes, sir.
Okay, sorry, what day is your age?
Saturday, the 20th, Saturday, the 27th.
Oh, yeah, 20th, 22nd.
If I may, I just want to put out there that the goal of the visioning workshop is to really get us set for the year, going into March, and particularly even later March. You know, that's three months into 2021. We did the last one at the beginning of February with that goal in mind to set us up for our, our year. So I definitely understand the concerns, but I think that it also can be addressed with either the venue or just what we're doing with, with the workshop to separate and, and be safe and all that. So I just want to remind the council to be cognizant of that, that workshop, that visioning workshop is by and large to set us up for, for our year. And just the longer that we go into it, the, we're tearing into that, that year that we're trying to vision for.
That's a fair point. We do a lot of the, last time, but we had a lot of impact on the budget, I think, in terms of how the budget was shaped. Is March a little bit late on, on staff from that standpoint?
I think March gives us a, a good amount of time, we can still get it done. That we also have the households.
And since we're talking about, and since we're talking about budget workshops, I personally would like to see those start earlier than they did this past year.
So then let's shoot for the end of February, if that'll work with everybody's schedule.
I agree with that, too, what Councilman Ellis is saying, the quicker, the earlier we can get the workshop done, the beginning of the year, the better we can focus on our goals, and also the budget, if we can even get that as early as maybe March or maybe April, and that way we can have a full, long year, you know, if we have to meet maybe once a month if we need to. I'm up for it, okay? I'm up for us, it's up, again, it's going to be the direction of staff, but the more we are able to dissect everything and look at the common goals that we're, we're putting forth, I, I think it would really help us out to where we're not in a crunch in August.
I agree with Councilmember Tobias, with everything, with the exception of the direction of staff, the direction is by us on what we, when we want to start those, so I, I agree with everything Councilmember Tobias just said, and I, I would be up for a once-a-month meeting as well and starting the budget workshop sooner.
True, it's just to imply that we make sure we have the venues and we have the time and the, the staff available, if, if, say if people are on vacation and so forth, that's all I'm saying.
Does anyone, does anyone have a, a particular Saturday in February that is no-go that they want to try to get off the, the list?
The 13th is a no-go.
Yeah, I was going to say, you know, that's a, check with your spouses before you go for the 13th as the...
Yeah, that's, that's going to be a bad weekend.
20th?
Sounds good, 20th, mid-month, or even the 6th, even though it's Super Bowl weekend, but I don't mind.
We're doing the 20th.
Because I know my Cowboys won't be there, so.
Hey, you never know.
I think Jerry's buying them tickets to be there.
What's the over-under on that?
I'd be open to either the 6th or the 20th as well.
I think the 20th works better for me, Scott.
Yeah, it works for me.
Okay. I will begin looking for a facilitator for that date as well as a location.
Okay.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Anything else? I think we're done.
I, just as, just like to comment on the Christmas portion of it. Scott, I just want to thank you, the staff, and everyone that worked hard, Mariana with the Parks Board on the decorations downtown, and for bringing Santa forward. When I heard that Santa wasn't going to be a part of the fire district's display this year, it just broke my heart, but for you all to step up and to be able to bring this to the communities and to the kids, COVID's taking so much away from us, but to be able to give them a little glimmer of, of pride and hope was wonderful, so I think you made a lot of young people's Christmas a lot better, considering what the climate is right now, so thank you.
We done? That was very good, well said. All right. Motion adjourned?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. We are adjourned. Thank you.